Okay, let's go ahead at 6 o'clock. Welcome to Planning and Zoning for Silver City for Tuesday, April 3, 2018. And if we could, please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Argando, if you would please do a roll call, we actually have a quorum.
Commissioner Clemens?
Here.
Commissioner Stephen?
Here.
Commissioner Cybil?
Commissioner Costello?
Here.
Commissioner Kara?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, first thing on the agenda this evening is purple of the agenda, as always. Anyone have any corrections, changes, concerns with the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the evening.
I move that we approve the agenda Tuesday, April 3, 2018, as stands.
No second?
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then approval of minutes from December 5, 2018. Have all the commissioners had a chance to look those over? And if so, were there any corrections needed, or additions, or edits?
I have one question. Under the approval of minutes, although five commissioners were present, Priscilla, it says that I move to approve November 7, and Commissioner Costello seconded, and then passed by a unanimous vote of 3-0. Should that be 5-0?
It should be 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's the only thing I know.
Okay, so then we can get that corrected, and then I'll sign it with the correction. And we have no old business. Tonight, we have a public hearing, and we have a number of people here, so I'm going to go ahead and go over how the process works, so everybody has a good understanding of it. We're looking at a variance this evening. This is a quasi-judicial session, which means it's being treated, you have testimony, and it's treated just as you would be in a court. Therefore, people will be getting up and giving testimony. When someone is giving testimony, the first thing I want you to do is state your full name, and then give your testimony. Always speak to the commission, not to other people in the room. All comments, everything should be directed to the commission. And we prefer not to have anybody interrupt anybody while they're giving testimony. Everyone who wants to speak has a chance to speak. So to keep things going smoothly, we'd like everybody to kind of follow those rules of order. And first, I do need to ask really quickly, have any of the commissioners had any ex parte conversations regarding tonight's case?
No.
Okay. And I have, having looked it over, have a quick disclosure, which really doesn't mean anything, but in case somebody, this is on television, and in case somebody sees me and doesn't realize, I'm pretty sure that the lot that we are talking about, I used to own, but not any longer. It's been a long time, we sold it, and I have nothing to do with the current owner, so, but if somebody were to see me and wonder, thinking, hey, wait, I thought you owned that lot, I do not. And so I did want to have full disclosure about that. So, the way that it'll work then is, we will start by having the town present, and then we will ask the applicant to come forward and give reasons for the request, along with any evidence that they have. At that point, we ask if there's anyone who wants to speak in favor, and they can come forward. And then we ask if there's anyone who wants to speak against this, and they can come forward. We do try to ask that people, you know, I don't like to put time limits on, and it's not like we have 50 people in the room, and I really hate time limits, but we do ask that you stay pertinent, you know, stick to the program, and not get repetitious. So if somebody comes up and makes a lot of statements, and you agree, you can say, "I agree," but you don't need to repeat the same things, evidence that other people have already stated. And I think that's everything I kind of wanted to go over, so I'll go ahead and read off what the public hearing is for this evening. It's VA 18-01. It's a request for a variance to construct an eight-foot fence bordering the south and east side of the property. The property is addressed as 1728 and 1730 North Georgia Street, Silver City, New Mexico. The applicant is Dana Basket, owner. Anyone who wants to speak has to come up and, right now, and swear in. You don't have to speak if you swear in, but you can't speak if you don't swear in. So if you think you might want to speak this evening, if you want to go ahead and come up to the podium, and we'll swear you in. Okay, if you'll raise your hand, and please repeat after me. Aye, and state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Will be the truth, solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give will be the truth.
I'm guilty of perjury.
I'm guilty of perjury.
Thank you. Okay, so then if we could have the town go ahead and present.
So this is VA 18-01. It's a variance to construct an eight-foot fence bordering the south and east side of the property. The applicant is Dana Basket, the owner. Ms. Basket purchased the lot addressed 1728 North Georgia Street in November of 2017. She lives in the adjoining property, which is addressed 1730 North Georgia Street. The property owner to the south has a home which is two stories high. Ms. Basket has had a civil dispute with the neighbor, and would like to put up a fence of eight deep bordering her property for privacy and protection. She would also like to extend the eight-foot fence to the back of the two lots, bordering Virginia Street Park for added privacy. Section 6.3.19A of the Land Use Code states that a variance allows a building or structure to be built if strict enforcement of the Land Use Code would result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships for the applicant, and that by granting the variance, the spirit of the Land Use Code will be observed, public safety and welfare secured, and substantial justice done. Under no condition shall a variance permit a use that is not otherwise permitted in the zone district where the property is located. So here is an aerial view of the property. I know it's kind of small and hard to see here, but it does show the two properties, the two lots that are addressed. Here is a front view of the property. As you can see, it's an empty lot. Here is the property on the south side. Here is the rear view of the property on the south side. And this is where she's wanting to put the fence adjoining this property. Here is the property on the north side, which she owns also, 1730 North Georgia. And here is a front view showing the park behind the property. The Planning and Zoning Commission shall only approve a variance if it makes the following findings: the hardship of which the applicant complains is one that is unique to the applicant, rather than one suffered by the neighbors or the general public; the hardship relates to the applicant's land or property; the hardship was not created by the deliberate action of the applicant, or by one under his control and reasonable remedies are not presently available; the granting of the variance is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan; the granting of the variance is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the Land Use Code; the granting of the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood surrounding the property where the variance is proposed and otherwise is not detrimental to the public welfare; and the variance will not result in the extension, expansion, or enlargement of a non-conforming structure in violation of Article 7, and will not authorize the initiation of a non-conforming use of land. In the review of the application, the Community Development Department is in the opinion that all the findings have been met by the applicant, and that the hardship is unique to the applicant.
I have a real quick question. The house is to the south. How close is it to its, to the border between them?
This house?
Yeah, how close is it to the lot line?
It is, I'm not sure.
It is definitely on the lot line.
Yeah, I'm not sure how close it is to the lot line.
Okay, okay. We'll get that later. Okay. And, yeah, the question, please.
Ben, thank you for this picture, because it's clearer here than it was in the overview in our packages. I'm assuming that this is the retaining wall that's running right along the edge, right there? A little bit higher, and then it slopes down?
It's on the, on this, it looks like it's on the right side, yeah.
It would be on my right hand side.
And you could barely see it in this picture.
Yes, okay. But is that the retaining wall that's referenced?
That's already there, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions for the town right now? You'll have to wait till your turn to speak. Okay, in that case, I'd like to have the applicant come forward, and please again, state your name, and then go ahead, and make sure, is that on?
Hello?
Yep, there's a little button up there.
My name is Dana Basket. I do have a photo that shows the retaining wall and the property boundary as marked by the survey company, if that's helpful. Should I bring that?
Yeah. Okay, you want to put anything in?
Okay. So I purchased this lot late last year, and there was a dispute, a civil dispute, to remove the neighbor's property. And that turned into a restraining order that was granted, I believe in December of last year. And then at the hearing, it was extended through the end of February. And they were given until the end of February to remove the property, which was done. As part of the hearing, to kind of make things a little bit easier, our property boundary is actually on the other side of that retaining wall, and the fence that they constructed, the post for that fence, and part of the fence is actually on the lot, on my lot. And so to make things easier, we agreed to put the fence up on the other side of that retaining wall. And so that retaining wall is already, you know, a couple of feet up. So the request for the variance was partially because of the restraining order. That was the initial idea, we need a tall fence. And then, once we kind of looked at it, we just realized that eight feet, from their perspective, would probably actually be less than six feet from that boundary. And in the process, thought maybe an eight-foot fence blocking the, providing a little bit more privacy from the park would be a good idea as well. That's pretty much it.
And then we do need to have you, I know you filled out the form, but we do need to have you, do you have that with you, before you fill that out, with the, all the 1 through 7 findings? Could you just kind of go through that real quickly? Because even though we've had a chance to see it, it's good to have it go on the record verbally, because, like I said, this is on cast TV, and it gets recorded, so if you could go through that, that would be great.
So the questions and answers, or just?
Just about, yeah, you can just give your answers. I mean, you can kind of just do an overview of each.
Okay. So for a question on the TRO, pertaining to the specific neighbor and properties in question, and owner of properties. And question to, the temporary restraining order is specific to the lot, and there is no trespass for the home and lot at 1730. The third question, the hearing was completed, and the restraining, temporary restraining order was extended. No other remedies are known other than fencing at this time. The variance does not diverge from the town's comprehensive plan. The variance does not diverge from the purposes and intent of the Land Use Code. The fence will be safe and is intended to solve a problem, and the variance will not violate Article 7.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
I just want to make sure that I understand, when you said that, from the neighbor's perspective, an eight-foot fence would pretty much visually be the equivalent of six-foot fence, is that because there's a slope, and you were building below the ree?
There's a retaining wall, and so there's a difference between the ground in those two spaces. So the retaining wall is the difference. And in some places, it's probably a little over two feet. It varies as it goes along.
But there's a, basically a drop in?
Yes.
In the geography there?
Yeah.
Thank you.
What's the wall going to be, what's it going to consist of?
We're still sort of in the process of trying to figure out the fencing, but some sort of combination of steel and wood, something attractive.
Okay. But not a block wall or a rock wall, you're looking at a wooden wall?
Yeah, it's a steel and mortar.
Or metal.
Yeah.
And you're not going across the front, or the north side of the lot, just two sides, like an L?
That's correct.
Okay. How long have you owned the house that you're in?
I've owned the house I'm in now for, I don't know, a little over a year, not too long.
Okay.
How is the determination you made that this is a two-story house to the south of here?
Well, I guess that's not a great way to describe it. In the back, it's two stories. Again, that lot is a slope, and so the back of the home is a two-story, whereas the front is a large three-story, I guess.
And if you wouldn't mind staying, because we have some other questions before we close the general session. Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak in favor of the applicant? And if you would, state your name.
Hello, my name is David Baker. And I live in the house at 1730 North Georgia with Dana. I wanted to just clarify a little bit on the geography of the property. So Georgia Street sits higher, and it slopes down towards the park to the east. And also, the neighbor's house to the south sits up a little higher, so the retaining wall steps down into this lot. And so that's why we're talking about a higher fence to make up for that step, if that clarifies at all. And I just want to support what Dana was talking about, about the civil dispute. I witnessed a lot of conflict. After Dana purchased the property, she requested that the neighbors remove their property off of it, and instead of that happening, more stuff was moved onto the property, and it just created quite a conflict. And so that's, that brought up this whole idea of creating a bit more privacy. If, we went back to that photo right before that shows the side view, yeah, that one there. On the neighbor's house there, that window to the far left, to the back, since the land slopes down at that spot, the bottom of that window is at least five feet off the ground, maybe, maybe six. And so a six-foot fence would just come to the very bottom of that window, so that wouldn't offer any privacy at all. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions, Commissioner Baker? Any questions? Okay. If you wouldn't mind, if you don't mind staying, if you have any questions?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else wanting to speak in favor? Okay, anyone who would like to speak opposed to? Okay, if you'd like to come up, please state your name.
First, I look at you. So in the opening, there is a map of the, of the system engineer. And Ben, you want to wait for this, though. Just until you get back to the mics, so you can be speaking into the mics. So we'll just look at these, and then you can start right there.
So, good evening, my name is Anna Linsky. I live on 1722 North Georgia Street. Together, we have two sons and my husband. So the side where you're looking at here, the window, those are our three bedroom windows. The only three windows in our bedrooms that provide all daylight in the rooms. So, to start off, I wanted you to have a look, please, at the map that I kind of pulled out of the package. That map shows, from all the lines between, the spaces between the two lines, between any given two lines, they constitute two feet in elevation difference. So if you look at the Peel subdivision, I can't find my own left, so. So if you look at the North Peel subdivision, variations and elevations are the rule, they are not the exception. There is not one slope, but there is, there is different slopes on different properties. Besides the, the three properties, basically at the back of the Georgia Street block bordering the Virginia Street volleyball court, those three properties are the only ones that only deal with the two-feet total variation in elevation. All other properties deal with a multitude of elevation differences on each lot. That's the rule. It's not an exception. Which is basically what I wanted to first, after looking at the neighborhood, and also... Sorry, I forgot this other map. I don't know if you can, look at the Peel subdivision map, that all the lots at the Peel subdivision block are fifty by 135 feet. They all change, share the same characteristics. They are identical, and they have the same variations in elevations in common. So, the applicant presented the neighbors and the board with an application that has to fulfill all the requirements of the code. So the first thing that one has to notice when one is looking at this application is that the only, the only reasons given by the applicant to request this variance are personal reasons. Basically, she's saying, "I have a temporary restraining order, and I am involved in a lawsuit with a neighbor, and therefore, I feel unsafe, and I need a fence." However, as I wrote down, there are no, there are no exceptions to the requirements that an applicant has to meet for personal reasons that are particular to the applicant, and not the property of the applicant. In other words, every application has to basically mitigate a situation that is unique to that particular property. So if, on the first page, I basically, I did a transcription of the applicant's answers to the seven necessary findings to meet the application criteria. Then on page two, I basically lay out what my findings are of the seven findings. The applicant wants the board to approve the bypassing of a rule which all other Silver City property owners are held to, which is a fence may not exceed six feet in height. There are no other fences that are over six feet in height in the subdivision, in the street, not on Virginia, not on Alabama, not on Georgia. And there are many variations in height. There are two or two-story buildings on our block, on Georgia Street, and neither one has over six-foot-tall fences next to it. Our house is not classified as a two-story property, it's a one-story property. The front of the property is at grade level, and since there are height variances, just like other properties on the street, the back of the property is, is lower. So there is a possibility for a basement. That does not make a two-story building. And, so, I will get back to that. Exceptional, extraordinary circumstances must apply to the property, which do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone or vicinity, and resolved from lot size or shape, topography, or other circumstances over which the applicant has no control. That's the standard. The reason then has to be something beyond the applicant's control. Applicant cannot just justify approval of a variance on the simple contention that it is inconvenient to follow the rules. A variance allows a building or structure to be built if strict enforcement of the Land Use Code would result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships for the applicant, and that by granting the variance, the spirit of the Land Use Code is observed, public safety and welfare secured, and substantial justice done. A variance may not, however, constitute a grant of special privileges inconsistent with the limitations of the other adjacent surrounding properties, as stated by the Silver City Code. A special privilege is defined as an exceptional privilege, not granted to other owners. Other owner on the other side inquired with the Community Development Department if he could erect a taller fence, and he was told, "No." And he abandoned the idea, and he built, just like everybody else, a six-foot fence. All seven findings or conditions in the application must be met for a variance to be granted, according to the code. So, the first finding, I won't go over the finding, because we all have them printed out. It raises the question, what rights do other property owners in the vicinity, in the same zone, have, which the applicant is deprived of because of a hardship? What can the applicant not do when other surrounding property owners can? With a basket answer to finding one, it absolutely fails to state and explain what unique hardship is present, and how the applied variance would remedy that hardship. A hardship must be more than an inconvenience or preference for lenient standard. The applicant implies she needs an eight-foot fence for her protection and safety. How an eight-foot fence would remedy that hardship, that perceived hardship, "I need privacy and protection," where a lawful six-foot fence would not, applicant does not explain in her application. Neighbors have issues. Sometimes they get along, and sometimes they do not. Neighbor disputes or legal suits are not considered circumstances beyond the control or unique to any applicant. Failing to provide any particular... Failing to provide any particulars as to why an exemption should be made made the applicant fail finding number one. As for your information, there are no legal lawsuits. As the applicant stated, there was one court hearing in which a judge decided, "We had to vacate a property which we had been using, using for over three years", yeah, because we had an agreement with the owner to purchase it. So.
Excuse me, is the owner there here to testify to that?
Uh, is he here to testify to that?
Right.
What would you like to have testified to? If we used that property for three years with his permission?
Yes.
It's in court, I can give you a court order, I can give you a court order with states that there wasn't a, that there was talk that we would share the lot.
Okay.
Basically, Mrs. Basket got the agreement from Mr. Freeman to buy the lot from her on the grounds that she, uh, stated to him that she would split it with us.
So. Can you have that in writing somewhere that you can show us?
Uh, I have that in writing from the court.
We'd like to see that.
Uh, I will have, be happy to provide it with you later, no problem. Uh, I have it with me. So, the second finding states that the hardship must relate to the applicant's land or property. It has to be tied to the land. It has to be specific to a particular feature of the land which sets it apart from all the other properties, uh, in the neighborhood. Mrs. Basket's response does not identify any unique features distinguishing her property from any of the other real addition lots. No peculiar characteristic, for example, location, size, shape, topography, weather features, rocks are mentioned. Instead, she states that a TRO is specific to her lot and that there is a no trespass. TROs, however, are not specific to a person. Are specific to a person, they are not specific to a property. Anyone can post a no trespass warning. Neither of the given reasons, examples in finding two, uh, has anything to do with a special feature or characteristic of Mrs. Basket's property or properties. Then the third finding is that the hardship was not created by deliberate action of the applicant or one out of the applicant's control and no other remedies are available. Hardships that result from personal circumstances may not be the basis of granting a variance. A hardship which is self-created is imposed by the applicant, not by the ordinance. Mrs. Basket reported hardship are civil legal matters, if they would exist, that, like I said, no such pending matters exist. But even if they would exist, in effect, they would not substantiate a hardship claim as defined, as, as, uh, a hardship claim as defined by finding three. Lawsuits and TROs are results of deliberate actions. Being involved in one, even with neighbor, are not hardships as defined by the Silver City Municipal Code or New Mexico State Law. Fourth finding, the variance is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. Applicant doesn't answer this, this, this question at all. So, again, back to the findings, if all seven findings are not met, the applicant is not considered valid. Applicant does not even answer, she just says that it does. The applicant is in opposition with the town's design guidelines. Design guidelines in the town plan are placed to help ensure that new structures and developments maintain and enhance the aesthetic quality and character of the community. The town plan does not include any personal exceptions to that. Literally, guidelines should serve to ensure that all new developments reflect and enhance existing land use patterns, community design elements, and sustainability. Design standards, including landscape standards, are important, and so on. If you look at the back fence line, and I have pictures on my computer and I'm happy to forward them to you. The adjacent fence, uh, to the proposed eight-foot fence to the right is five and a half feet tall. The one to the right of that is two feet tall. Our fence, that is right now, that would be to the left of this eight-foot fence, is five and a half foot tall. Yeah, the fence in front of the fence that they are purporting to build is five and a little feet tall. The fence line that they are wishing to build is a shared fence line with the city, with a city park. Yeah, allowing an applicant to build an unprecedented eight-feet-tall wall, yeah, fence, on the city line, a shared, uh, a city line property is unprecedented and it could potentially set a completely unwanted precedent. For us to have a hundred thirty-five-foot fence line that is eight feet tall, Mrs. Basket said that it would not cover our windows. Well, I can show you with the pictures, it would cover seventy-five percent of our bedroom windows. We did the test, we made an eight-foot fence and we held it against, on the fence line against the windows. I have the picture and I would like, I couldn't print them out in time, but I would like to forward them to you, uh, as evidence that, uh, it would definitely, uh, uh, create an exception that is unprecedented, uh, and, and definitely not, uh, anything we would have ever expected. So, allowing eight-feet-tall fences is clearly not in accordance with the design guidelines of the town or in spirit of the plan, it's, there's nothing like it. The granting, or finding five, the granting of the variance is in harmony with the purpose and the intent of the land use code. Again, uh, the applicant fails to answer this question, how her, how her application meets this requirement, she doesn't answer it. However, the land use code stipulates six feet maximum height for fences. The purpose and the intent of the land use code is to hold all residents and applicants to the same lawful standards and deny exceptions unless all seven findings are met. The submitted application does not meet those standards. The, the applicant has not even attempted to answer the questions on the application. Also, one part of the application, uh, clearly, if you look at the applicant's application, it states that a one paragraph description of the project, yeah, has to be submitted. What are you going to do and why do you want to do it? The two most basic questions. And, uh, and the applicant has not submitted a paragraph explaining what she wants to do and why she wants to do it and why she should be granted a variance. There is none of that, except for saying, "I have a TRO and a, and a restraining order." So, um, the man, okay. The project sets the standards and has clear specifications which conditions, uh, which condition, under which conditions exemptions can be given and which conditions have to be met. Finding six, the granting of the variance will not be injurious to the neighbors surrounding, surrounding the property where the variance is proposed and otherwise is not detrimental to the public welfare. Securing public welfare is defined as making decisions not adversely affecting an individual neighbor's property and not adversely affecting the right of public, of the general public. Approving this application would be injurious to me, my sons, my husband, as well as other neighbors that we talked to and got statements from. It deprives us and hundreds of users of the, uh, the Virginia Street Park, you know, of views, of the enjoyment of, uh, uh, having, um, aesthetics that are in proportion and in harmony with each other. And, uh, it would set a precedent. Allowing one owner to build an extra-tall fence because of an alleged vehicle situation is unprecedented. Then it would basically open the door for anybody that has, uh, wants to do something to file a lawsuit or to file a restraining order and say, "Hey, I got a restraining order pending, now you have to allow me to build a fence." That is eight-foot tall or ten-foot tall or twelve-foot tall. Not in any way having to do with the features of the property. It's not like, "I need to build a ten-foot wall as a retainer because otherwise these rocks would be coming down on my property." Yeah, it's dangerous not to retain this. I have to make it this tall because my property demands it. This is not anywhere like it. Merely stating on the application, "The fence will be safe and solve a problem", it doesn't cut it. Mrs. Basket's immediate neighbors, town employee Mr. Peter Penya, who is also under review, he spoke to him and his wife, they are the immediate neighbors to the left of Mrs. Basket on seventeen thirty-two Georgia Street. They advised us they were not informed, did not receive mail, Mrs. Basket did not visit to them. When they saw each other, Mrs. Basket did not engage in conversation and they did not receive a phone call. If you look on the public contact sheet that Mrs. Basket provided, it states that she sent to the list of addresses letters and that she made, uh, one phone call and two visits. I did more in half an hour. And in that half an hour, I was told by four different neighbors they had not been notified. It's also in my report, the names and the addresses of the people that say that they did not receive notification from either the town or, uh, Mrs. Basket. I myself own the property hundred fifty-two West State Street. I was not notified, neither was my tenant. Yeah, we're not even on the list. So, the list is also inaccurate, there's, uh, there's property owners listed on the list with, for example, with an address listed as a hundred ten North Virginia Street whose address is actually a hundred eleven, uh, Virginia Street. So, there are errors, omissions, and like I said, within a half an hour of a quick run around the neighborhood, I had four different parties tell me they did not receive notification. Three other parties told me they didn't receive notice in the mail and had no idea what this was about. It was not in any way clear to them. So, the variance, uh, so, I have included in the package, uh, the statements of the neighbors that want to oppose the variance and could not come here today personally, with their phone numbers, if you want to contact them for more questions or further input. Then the seventh, uh, yesterday, on, uh, Monday, April second, we came by accident to town. Uh, we were not here for the past week. So, we basically found out about this proceedings on Thursday. And on Monday was the first opportunity to go to the county building or to the city building. And we came to the Community Development Agency and had a chance to read the application file. It included Mrs. Arredondo's recommendation to the board to approve his variance request. In her recommendation, Mrs. Arredondo informs the board that she made a site visit and that her home to the south is a two-story home. We asked her about that, since it's incorrect, why that's in the recommendation, and she said it is a two-story home. I asked her to check the assessor record web records and then she pulled the recommendation from the file, refused to give us a copy and said that she would rewrite it and that we could come and pick up a copy today. So, today, at three twenty-five, we went back to the office and Mrs. Arredondo handed my husband the staff report, which is not dated, uh, in lieu of the rewritten promise recommendation. And, uh, she, she, uh, basically said that that was, you know, that was it. That was all that was going to be available. So, in that report, Mrs. Arredondo gives no grounds for granting this variance. First, Mrs. Arredondo states that Mrs. Basket wants an eight-foot-tall fence and then that there's a two-story home next door and that Mrs. Basket wants privacy and protection and is involved in a civil dispute. So, it's not a two-story home, so, apparently, Mrs. Arredondo did not even, uh, look in the assessor's records uh, to, to see if her recommendations were accurate and that is kind of a little bit upsetting to me. Uh, what stands out to me more than anything is the issues that Mrs. Arredondo, uh, raises in her granting this variance are not the issues mentioned by the applicant. The applicant only mentions a TRO and a restraining order. She does not mention a two-story, uh, house next door. Her mention, does she make mention of privacy? The privacy and the two-story home, they are additions from our own community development department. Which raises the question, when an application is not complete or a criterion in the application is not addressed as needed, whose task is it to fill in the blanks or to attempt to meet the criterion? Responsibility for completing and meeting the criteria to be granted a variance rests solely with the applicant. It is the role of the Community Development Department staff to do his or her best to identify parts of the application that need more information while preparing a report. Um, and return the application to the applicant with a request for additional information if needed. However, if the description of how the project meets the criteria is not fully supported by the written documentation and drawing of picture, the Community Development Agency may find that the information submitted is insufficient and the criteria not satisfied. All seven criteria must be satisfied in order to grant a variance. The Planning and Zoning Commission expects to be convinced that the variance requested is the minimum degree of non-conformity needed to mitigate a unique property, particular obstacle or feature. The applicant must demonstrate that special circumstances exist and that because of these circumstances, full compliance with the town's zoning code and rules would constitute an unlawful hardship. The recommendation, uh, that the planner gave does not give any factual or substantiating support to make an, to make an exception for Mrs. Basket. If granted upon appeal, the commission would have to explain and justify to the council how granting this requesting variance does not single this property out for special different treatment. Different treatment than similar situated property as is demanded by the land use code. Thank you for your time. Okay, does anyone have any questions before you leave the podium?
Yeah, I wanted to, uh, listen back.
All right, if you want to speak, you have to come up to the podium and give your name so that it, because again.
Let's go back to a question, yes?
Yeah, let's have a question for her, any questions that, or need to be addressed first.
Excuse me for just a minute, but my phone is ringing and I've got to put it on airplane mode. I apologize for that, so I hadn't already done that. Um, my question has to do with where you're saying the fence along the backside of the property between the park and, uh, the applicant's property would be on the park, the, the city's landline?
That is the, when you look at the real map that I provided you with, the big map.
Well, no, that's another question, I looked at all of that. But there's an alley.
It's not an alley.
Well, an easement, a roadway.
I, I, no, it's not. Uh, what you're looking at is, uh, basically over here, yeah? This is where the property. This is where the property's at. And everything from here, yeah, is, is city property.
The park is city property, yes.
Yeah, not the alley, but our back fence line is a shared fence line with the city, with the park, public park. Enjoyed by many, many families every day.
So there's, there's no, there's no easement between your lot line and the city park?
This is the... And Mrs. Arredondo provided...
The town doesn't have a family of the parks, but I'm talking to the Public Works Director. He said the whole park is all one property. They did fence it and make it like an alleyway for access. Um, I don't have anything showing that it's a legal easement, but I, we also don't have a survey, so I can't...
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
But I confirmed it with the, uh, the Mapping, Planning and Zoning Commission. It's city property. It's a shared, it's a shared property.
Okay, I'll need you to go to the mic, please. Again, this is... I want everybody, please, this is being taped on TV and we really need you to speak into the mics so that everybody can hear everything that's said. So I'll ask you to please go back to the podium and speak into there once you've handed everything.
Right.
No, that's all right. Just go to the podium and give your testimony, please.
Can I say a few things, please? These are the pictures of basically how an eight-foot fence blocks, uh, the alley and the windows and stands out like an eyesore everywhere.
In order for us to do that, we'll have to have a discussion about whether we want to continue this, uh, for the next meeting because we would have to have time to, um, see that. So we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that toward the end. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. And then I had someone else who wanted to speak also?
So I did not want to be repetitive, but I do want to make very, very, very clear that you can go and, uh, and look at any zoning appeals whatsoever or any ordinance appeals or any variance appeals, but there are no provisions anywhere in the land that would make a personal, you know, a, a personal situation, a personal something, a reason for a variance. It does not exist. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, my name is Ainer Schmidt. I'm the husband of Ms. B. and I live at the property on the south side of that lot which was purchased by Mrs. Basket. And so, uh, the retaining wall, uh, that exists is not a couple of feet high, but is a little bit more than a foot. Just wanted to bring that in. And, uh, I don't know, um, uh, I work outside of state quite often, so I'm not home. Um, Mr. Baker did know that I was not there. Uh, the whole thing came as a surprise. It was by accident that we showed up and, and came to know about their, uh, asking to build a high fence. He had no idea. Because where I was standing with Mr. Baker was that he shot me a message saying that, um, yeah, that the, the, thanking me that the clearing is completed, there were a few concrete things lying around which I, before me leaving, took care of. And that when I come back, we will talk about details about the retaining wall. And he was mentioning it, that we agreed, we meaning us, agreed to moving the retention wall, uh, towards us. And, uh, that was not at all agreed upon at the court meeting, at the hearing. So I was...
And everything that was agreed upon, it was all, every single one of the stipulations, suggestions, demands came from Mrs. Basket. Everything she wanted, she got. We agreed to everything she wanted. Yeah? So the last thing, and it's all here in the court order, I can, you know, it was signed, sealed and delivered by Judge Timothy Aldrich, who also denied her, Mrs. Basket, uh, uh, request, so to speak, to be, to have all the proceedings of this court action paid for. It was denied because the judge agreed that she had alternate means to get this business done. She did not have to do what she did, therefore she had to pay her own fees. I have that court order here in my hand. So basically after, uh, stating everything she wanted in front of Judge Aldrich, and now she turned around and now is making a completely different appeal in front of you.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, I was...
No, please don't, please don't bring that up right now.
You asked me to give the due, and I gave it to you.
I, I think, I think what we're gonna have to do here...
So I am giving the due because you asked for it.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say that I, you know, there was nothing coming from Mr. Baker to further on talk about the retaining wall. And so, uh, when I came back and now it was applied for the, the high fence, uh, I was, I found that very disturbing. Uh, and I, I, I...
That's unacceptable.
Yeah, I, I basically experienced it as an, I don't know how to say, kind of an attack. That's how I, I, I felt. Uh, but that's just my personal perception and it's not something I would in any way act on or anything. I, I just wanted to state that, that was what happened in me and I wanted to share that, yeah. Okay, that's, that's it.
Thank you. Um, anyone else who would like to testify as opposed? Okay. Then we give the opportunity back to the applicant to respond.
I'm not entirely sure where to begin. Um, I guess first and foremost, it's true that we did not communicate verbally with the neighbors about this. We did send a letter and the city sends a letter and we're not exactly on speaking terms with our neighbors, which seems fairly obvious. Um, the retaining wall isn't in question, but I do have the final order. Um, I don't know if that's what was just given to you, but I do have the final order regarding the retaining wall and our agreement. I don't know if it's really relevant or you want to see it, but, um, our agreement to put the fence on the other side. I mean, we could go back to court and put the fence on our actual property line, in which case we'll have a six-foot fence and it's gonna be probably the same situation for them. We didn't realize this was gonna be quite this, this serious. Um, I did not pursue extending the restraining order beyond the end of the February because Amalyn Spie in the hearing stated that she had relocated. And in fact, these months since the hearing has mostly not been there, and so...
This is not truthful. I, I think I told you at the beginning of this, for, of permanent orders...
I said at the beginning of the meeting that you do not interrupt people when they're speaking. You can wait. Go ahead.
I had requested a longer, uh, extension of the TRO and the judge only granted it until the end of the February, time for them to remove their belongings. I don't remember how long I had asked for, maybe six weeks or two months or three months. It wasn't a super long time, maybe three months. And they granted it for, I think it was about six weeks from the time of the hearing. And he did state that I could pursue extending that, which I would have done should Amalyn Spie had been present, but she hasn't been. Now with this, it has stirred things up and if it continues, I will likely continue to pursue more restraining order, some other sort of restraining order in this situation. Um, I don't really know what else to say. There was a lot that wasn't truthful that was said, but I don't know if it's really relevant to even argue about, actually. If it's a problem, everyone that I spoke to, I did get quite a few calls after I submitted that, that I had made two phone calls. I got a few calls, maybe like five people had contacted me and I spoke with them. No one had an issue, you know, no, I didn't go and talk to my neighbors back when this restraining order situation first came about. There was a lot of, um, reports to me that Amalyn had gone to talk to the neighbors and there was a lot of sort of slanderous stuff happening. And I didn't want to talk, I didn't go and talk to any of my neighbors personally about this. I just sent the letters. I just didn't want to get into a situation where I had to say something negative about the neighbors or I just didn't want to get into the situation. So when people called me and asked me, I gave them really vague information, but most people seemed to be really understanding about the, um, park situation. But if the majority of the neighbors don't want the fence along the park line, that's fine, you know? I'm definitely flexible about it. I think the main situation is if I could tell fence between myself and my neighbor.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to drop your speaker down? Thank you.
The way that Mrs. Basket speaks is slanderous. And it is not, um, if I say, this is the order and this is what happened, I speak from, from my position. Um, I give you the names of the neighbors that I speak to and their phone numbers and I give you the information that is pertinent to that. Um, just saying, oh, I called a few more people after first stating, oh, no, I didn't really make an effort to contact neighbors, it is an immediate contradiction. It's like trying to tell you what you want to hear. But the submitted paperwork and the homework and all the, all the requirements were not met and they were turned in. And also the department, they, they did not provide us with a recommendation, you know, in writing that we could take home and, and work with until four thirty this afternoon. So Mrs. Basket springs surprise after surprise. She is a social worker and she is very, very familiar with the TRO process. She does that on a daily basis for her clients. That's why she chose to pursue a TRO as the cheapest and easiest for her way to get us to clear up a property. She could have just asked, but she needed to create a situation in which she could justify not keeping her word, yeah, or splitting the property with us. Yeah? We are adversarial and, uh, and therefore I have to do these terrible things to protect myself from these terrible people. But we were living there, next door to each other, without any issues up until the moment that Mr. Freeman agreed to sell her that property. Mrs. Basket led me her car. I hung out with her mother. David Baker's son was reading our property, both on Georgia Street as well as on State Street. Yeah? There were multiple friendly, easy interactions. I can give you a three-year outprint of our conversations on Facebook between David Baker and myself through journeys in Italy.
Excuse me, I think we're trying to get...
What are you, a subject? Not really. Because the subject is that a variance is requested because of a personal situation. But also this situation, those are labels...
Please listen to me for one minute. A variance has nothing to do with personal. We don't look at personal. You talk about personal, she talks about personal. That's not what we're looking at, at all. So you're talking about, you're going on about the personal stuff, that's not what we're gonna look at. We're gonna look at the seven findings.
Well, then you only deny this application, so there is only personal stuff on it.
So let's just keep it to the findings and keep it to that, please.
Okay.
Here, here's what I want to do. I feel like, and I'll see if the other commissioners agree with me, I feel like we're missing a lot of information. I would like you to take this back and make copies and give it to the city to have it come to us through the city. I would like to have you do yours through the city. Uh, you know, you talked about agreement for things with the land and you had proof of that. You talked about some of the things...
Is that court order?
I would like you to take this and do it through the appropriate channel and I would like to postpone this until we have enough information because I feel like we're getting things on both sides and I would like to get some information from the city. I personally don't feel like we can make a decision tonight without getting everything we need.
So I... Arredondo stated that, uh, in her memory, there is no, uh, variance ever given for an eight-foot fence, that in her three-year history that, or records that she keep and that she checked and consulted, there is no single application asked for or granted for an eight-foot fence.
Okay. I understand that. But again, I'm gonna ask you, we're not gonna look at this, I'm gonna ask you to please go to the appropriate channel. I'm gonna ask the applicant to do the same thing with your paperwork.
You can say that, I'm just asking for it.
And then we were gonna ask probably some questions for the city too here.
Yeah, I wanted to add a couple of things. When we contact the neighbors, we get it from the Grant County tax roll. So whatever mailing address the property owner has on file with the county assessor's office, that's where we mail it. That's the only way we get information. Um, speaking to, uh, Mr. Penya, the Public Works Director, I spoke to him today, his girlfriend did not receive the letter, but I went and I looked at her address, it was an old address. So that happens, that's beyond our control. They get the same information because as the town, we have to provide the applicant with the same property owners, so that's where we got that. Um, I did provide them with the staff report today. Yesterday, they were, um, talking about the two stories height and I wanted to talk to Jamie about it and she said it wasn't relevant, so that's why today I gave them the staff report.
Okay. Thank you. Um, what we're gonna do right now, we're gonna close the meeting to input from the public. We'll have a discussion among the commissioners. Um, we would like people to stick around. If there's any questions, you don't have to, but, uh, we would like it if you did. Also, then you'll, you'll hear the results of what we, we decide. Uh, first, I do want to state, if we do continue this next time, we really need to have everybody come in with, with everything they need and I don't want interruptions from other people when they're talking. I, I want you to, this is a judicial, quasi-judicial hearing. We need to treat it as such. Okay. Any questions, comments from the commissioners?
I would, uh, appreciate it if the town would answer the question regarding the shared line of the fencing.
Find that out.
With the town?
Yeah. If, if, if in fact that back property line of the applicant's property is actually immediately adjacent, or is there a setback between it and the park property?
So the park property shows on the Grant County parcel map that I have, it shows all as one property. Whether there's an easement there, a survey would have to be done and some research would have to be done maybe with the title company because we don't have that information. That property line is with the town, but whether there's an easement there, we don't have that information.
So for the applicant, how close would you, the back fence, the fence that would be on the east side that you're requesting, how close would that be to your property line?
Well, there's a fence present there on the property of the home that I live in and we would just remove that fence and put it there. And it is set back a bit. I do have the, uh, survey marker there, so it's, it's set back.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm just gonna, I don't, uh, for me, that's as big of an issue because I think that it's, if the fence, whatever the height of the fence, if it's properly placed, placement's one thing, height's the other. So you can't put a fence, you shouldn't legally put a fence on somebody else's property and I think that's not what's being proposed. It's the, the height which is the subject of the variance. So I, I get the, the sentiment of it, but I also think that it's, um, for me, an issue that, that the town owns the property rather than a private property owner back behind there, whether it's the public enjoyment versus an individual's enjoyment. You can build one fence, I can build my four-foot fence on my side and you can put your six-foot fence on the other side if you're not happy with height of my fence.
Right. As long as you're on my property line.
Because then you just build it on your, on your property.
Yes, so you have to know where the property line is. Okay. That's another question. Um, I would like to see, I would like to see, uh, anyone who wants to speak, come back next time. And I'd like to have, first of all, I'd like to have access to everything so we can all look at it first, which we normally do, which we didn't. I'd really like to have a chance to look at this over... I'd really like to have a chance to look this over more carefully. I'd also like to see, you know, you said, it seems like you are both saying you have two different sets of court cases that you're saying say different things. I don't know, I would like to see any documentation. Any documentation that you, if you would, just take it to the town and they would make copies and get those to us, that's the appropriate way to do that. And so I feel like that, I don't think it would be a bad idea to run by and see if the city attorney wanted to weigh in on anything also on this particular case.
Yeah, to that point, I just want to say too, I think that's, you know, whatever the outcomes of a legal, other legal proceeding are, I just would not, again, I would like a little bit more guidance from the town as far as what that impacts our decision-making because to me, that almost seems also irrelevant. I mean, there's, you know, really honestly, like there's a, I appreciate that you guys are all going through some stuff clearly, there wouldn't be this much energy around this if there weren't, but it does kind of get down to a simple, seven things, and the heights and a variance on that. And so, and I don't know even if a judge said, you have the legal right to build a twelve-foot fence, whether we would have a legal right to grant that variance. You know, to me, that feels like a different legal structure than what we would even engage in. So while, again, I think there may be some court documents, I don't know how relevant they are to any of the proceedings tonight.
In fact, they may or may not be.
You know, I mean, because if the judge tells you to do something and contrary to town ordinance, that seems to be between the presiding jurisdiction and the town, they're not allowed as a variance board or as a planning zoning board. But if that's not true, I think that's something that we would need to know and whether or not we should even look at those documents and how they impact our decision-making. So that's, you know, generally, I guess, just sort of my own comments or feelings on it is that this is one of those things that is really that hardship that's unique to the applicant, that I would number one, is one of the hardest things to meet when you're talking about land and what we really are talking about here that everybody needs to remember is we're talking about the land, not the people. And unless there's some other, in my opinion, as far as I understand our duties, unless there's some other compelling reason as a planning and zoning board, that that may not be within our purview to work under. So if we need more clarity on that, I'm happy to ask for it or seek it, but that's where I stand with it right now.
I agree with you completely on that, that is, the number one variance, what it means and the intent.
If I understand correctly, two, in accordance with Commissioner Costello, number six, I mean, all seven criteria need to be met for a variance to go through and number six does seem to indicate that, you know, an eight-foot fence would be injurious to the neighborhood, to the neighbor, to the south because of the blocking of light to the windows.
I think that it depends on how close it was and the fact that it would have been on the north side and how close the fence was, I think that would make a big difference in knowing that. That would also be good information to know how close the fence that would be built, how many feet is that from the actual house? Five feet? Is that correct?
The neighbor, she had the exact same situation on her north side and she chooses to keep her fence, blocking her fence, growing six feet.
Okay, thank you.
It would be the exact same situation for her. She would have no light in her bedroom window if she had an eight-foot fence and eight-feet fence next to her north side, the only one on the north side stands minus her property. So she wants to ditch it out, but she does not want to take her medicine herself.
We have no, no north side window.
Yes, you do.
So, I mean, everybody's speaking on a theme right now, so I'll just point out it again and say that, to me, that whether you have the only light coming in is from a single window that's, you know, underneath a six-foot fence, the six-foot fence would still be legal and the window would not be an issue. If you built your house inside the setback, if it had been grandfathered in and you built it three feet from your property line and the fence is going in on your property line and it was a legal fence of illegal height, as far as I understand the code, there's no, nothing in that, nothing in our ordinance that says that, at least as far as we are, we're not code enforcement. We're here to discuss the validity of a variance based on the seven criteria that are laid out. So if the ordinance changes and all of a sudden the town also allows fourteen-foot fences or twenty-foot fences or eighteen-foot fences, but only on the north side of the property and only on the other end of the block and whatever, that's their jurisprudence, not ours. We're here to weigh the merits of what the ordinance is and what the variance, the impact that variance would have, so I don't really care about the windows or the other stuff, you know, from my perspective.
I think that is valid though because if it's injurious to the neighbors, how is it injurious to the neighbors? It blocks their view. So I think that there is, you do have to still look at that element. I mean, if your neighbor put a fence where, you know, if you happen to build your house and it was historic and it was way up against the house next to it and they put a fence that just completely blocked your window and it might, you know, I mean, so I think that it does state, go toward a person being able to state whether or not they feel like they're being affected negatively by it, so, yeah. So this, I think, goes in concert. I, it sounds like there is some question about whether or not the findings are met and if any commissioners feel comfortable that the findings are not met, you're certainly welcome to do a motion. We do not have to delay and ask questions if you feel like you can finalize this without any further information.
I actually do think we have a pretty clear case here regarding number six and arguably number one, that those are not met under this request for a variance. And so I would actually put forth the motion to deny the variance.
Okay. And so what you, for your motion, you want to go ahead and say you'd like to deny and just read off, if you go to the front page, you go to the hearing?
So I would put forth the motion to deny the request VA 18-1, a request for a variance to construct an eight-foot fence bordering the south and east side of the property. The property is addressed at 1728 to 1730 North Road Street. The applicant is Dana Basket, owner of Silver City, New Mexico.
Okay, and do I have a second? A second doesn't have to, it mean that you will say yea or nay, but a second allows us to have discussion on that. One second. Yeah, thank you. I do want to follow up what you said. I had a good discussion with the town attorney and about the number one variance where it does apply to the land itself, it has to apply to the land. And so that's a very valid point. Any other questions, discussion?
I just want to reiterate that, you know, the focus here is on the, is on the land and not on the people and we spent a lot of time talking about the people tonight and I hope you guys get that worked out regardless of how this vote happens, but it's not about the people.
Right, very good. Okay. If you all feel comfortable with it, we can go ahead and vote. Does anybody not feel comfortable with what we have?
I'm not comfortable simply because of that property line and what it, having come from a much larger city where no fencing that could not be seen through was ever allowed around the park because of the danger of it becoming a rape zone. So that is why I'm asking what that setback is. It's, if it's on personal property and then there's an extension that is not being used as part of the park and then the park has got its own see-through fencing, that's one thing. But if that chain link fence is equivalent to the property line with the town and the park, I'm personally having an issue with it not being allowed.
Well, the chain link fence that makes the other side of that, what looks like an alleyway, that's already on the property. The property line to the park is with the property line of all of the property owners along that area. The town added that fence and I can't speak as to why or if there's an easement and it was an actual alleyway, but that smaller fence is not the property line. That's on property.
The other thing is obviously, we have the option since we're making the decision, there's several options. One is, we can say, we grant only the one fence. We can say, we're allowed to say, you grant a variance, but it's only for the time that the person who's living there has that need. So the example would be, somebody has to have a wheelchair ramp, it has to be in setback because they've become handicapped and they still don't take the feet, but then when they move, it has to be removed. So you can make, grant something and say, we're granting it because of a specific circumstance and do meet these seven findings, however, it wouldn't necessarily meet them in the future. And so you can put stipulations on a, if you want to grant a variance, so on a motion. However, we do have a motion out there. But Commissioner Steven, did you not want to vote on that yet or did you want to?
I think I'm just not comfortable on voting on it yet because I just think I have questions that are unanswered about the physical, where the physical barriers would be. And if we should continue this, I would like to request that you have us have a meeting together as just a commission to take a look at the physical property.
So we can all go and do a walk together? Okay. Can we get, you said, there's not really much way of getting out any more information that you've given us tonight regarding that back line?
Only because we referenced it from another case and before, we don't, in our office, we don't have a survey. So unless the town was to decide to get that part surveyed, which, I mean, personally, I think it's a good idea, but it's not, I'm not the decision maker on that, I can't say exactly, you know, where the actual survey lines are.
But you did say in the packet we got, which also included incidentally the paragraph of explanation from the applicant, you did say that it had been approved by the police department and the fire department, that they hadn't.
They had no issues. Every department looked it over and they had no issues.
Okay, okay, thank you.
But the only reason I know about that property line with the park is because we've spoken about it with the public works director because we weren't sure if that was a legal alleyway. Technically, on the Grant County parcel map, it's not, it just shows us one big piece of property and the property lines adjoining the property lines of the property owners and then that fence was just put in there. But without a survey and further research, I can't say for sure.
Commissioner Steven, I do have one question. Were we to take the back fence off the table, would you feel comfortable with where we're
So I suppose the, all of the other departments of the city have said they have no problem with it. I think maybe it's just something I personally would like to talk to the town about in future.
Okay. Other questions, any comments, any? So we do have a motion on the table, that means we do have to do a roll call, but on the motion is on the table, just to be clear, because I probably hear a new one. If you're saying no to this, so a vote aye means no, so don't, does that make sense?
We're voting to either approve or disapprove the motion to deny.
Right. Motion to deny, right.
Or approve to deny, or deny to deny.
Right, so you're approving the motion, so aye for most. Right, correct, okay. If we could please have a roll call.
Commissioner Clament?
Aye.
Commissioner Steven?
Nay.
Commissioner Costello?
Aye.
Commissioner Carr?
Aye.
To let you know, you are allowed to appeal to the city council and if you wanted to do that, you would just go to the town offices and they would do that procedure. And you only have, tell me this.
Fifteen days from the date of, just normal procedure, so maybe about three, I can give you an exact date.
So we have no new business, we do not have a community forum this evening, that might be something we want to discuss. Do we have any reports from staff?
I was going to ask, can we go back to the minutes approval because I don't know if we actually motioned and did a second for the minutes?
Oh, yeah, so we need to approve them?
Yes.
We've motioned, but we didn't approve.
Yeah, we need to approve them with the correction, so Stephanie needs to make a motion to approve the minutes with the correction.
I motion to approve the minutes with the correction.
I'll second it.
All day.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from staff?
No, we don't have anything else.
Okay. Reports from commission, anybody have anything? If not, I want to go over one thing real quick, but.
I would just like to bring up that maybe when we do have a discussion, we really need to have a serious one about fencing around parks on public land or adjacent public land because this comes from personal experience. I lived across the street from a very lovely park that also had a little train that ran around on it and we got approval not for a wall, but for some fencing, or excuse me, for some landscaping that was pretty dense and a very unfortunate incident happened on the other side, the park side. And I can only imagine what would have happened had there been a physical barrier there and people hadn't been able to get through the landscaping to intercede. So I think that that's an issue, that as a town, would we allow a park to be screened in in such a way that you don't have a line of sight into it? And that's why I had a reservation about this entire thing, had more to do with that than anything else.
That's a really good, good idea. We can certainly put a recommendation in writing to town council regarding that. If you'd want to put something, you know, like in writing to, you know, complete all the ideas that you have and bring it, and then we could put it in the agenda for next time and approve to have it recommended.
It would, I believe, have to be a text amendment, all, there'd be a lot of wording that would have to be changed in the land use code.
Oh, really?
The city code, so I'm not sure of the steps, I'd have to talk to Jamie and see what we can do, but I know there's some things that would have to be changed that we'd have to get approved through a text amendment.
Okay, if you could bring that information to the next meeting.
Yes.
And Commissioner Steven could bring maybe a little write-up and then, you know, because we have, then we would just, obviously just be recommending to city council and then it just goes to them under their, from there. Okay. Then the other thing I have is, I, I'm going on my eighth year here, I'll be eight years in October and I think I've been chair for, I don't know how, most of it. And I would really like to not be chair and so I'm hoping that somebody else would be interested in being chair because I've been a long time now. So if you guys don't want to commit now anybody, but if maybe think about it and maybe at the next meeting if somebody is interested in stepping up and being chair, we'll go through the process. I don't know what I officially would have to do or how we, I know there's official process we have to do when we vote on it, but I don't know if it's beyond just somebody saying, I'd like to recommend someone and then everybody voting.
I don't know if I have to vote with the mayor, like he's the one that approves you, right?
Well, beyond, but not for chair.
Oh, okay.
The chair is just to vote with us.
Okay.
But I don't know if I have to do, like, do I have to do an official write-up, you know?
I'll find out.
Yeah, what the process is for that. And again, and maybe if somebody could talk to, or I can maybe talk to Nick, Commissioner Schibell, between now and then and mention it to him. He is the co-chair right now, which means if I'm gone, he's the one who steps up and does the chair.
And has the most background too. And has the most background, too, but I don't know.
Okay. Anything else?
And I just want to say, before you had said that, I wanted to say that tonight was extremely impressive to watch the chair of this commission and much appreciated the tone and the professionalism that had to be imparted upon this forum today. And I thank the city for the restraint shown and the professionalism and the commissioners. What seemed like a fairly straightforward case is a very difficult case, and I thank Commissioner Costello for pointing out number one, which is a really important point about the land versus the people.
Yes.
We've had this before.
Yes.
I think that, to your point, Chair Clemens, is that, you know, I, I don't feel that I am ready in any way to do anything of that sort at this point in time. I think you're needed by this commission. I think that there are persons on this commission who could probably step into your shoes, but just wanted to point that out in terms of my experience in the last two sessions.
So, thank you. I think that all of you, you do an excellent job. Your questions are always excellent. You guys are on top of it. And I really, I, when I first started this, you know, you, you don't have training right away, and then when you do get training, it's, it's not always full, you don't have so much time. The attorneys sit down with you, but you don't have everything covered. And I did not know upfront that the hardship had to be land-based. I did not know that.
Well, that makes one and two redundant to one another.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. And I, I wish that they were just slightly worded differently so that it's obvious.
So two, two states, the hardship relates to the applicant's land or property. The one state, the hardship of which the applicant complains with one that is related to the applicant.
And, you know, when you hear that, when you say, when it relates to the applicant's land, my first thought was, it relates to, they had to be the owner of the land. I mean, I was looking at it in that terms, like, you're stressing the applicant's land versus the applicant's land. And so that is kind of, it would be, I don't know, we discussed this last time, and I, I did talk with the attorney about it, and he said that, of course, we can have discussion and we can, you know, recommendations can be changed.
If it brings applicant's land rather than one suffered by the neighbors would be more clarifying language, but then why do we need the hardship relates to the applicant's?
And I think we've, now, so with, well, it has to do with personal, with private property issues unless with zoning. And I, I'm going to, I'm just not sure, which is my impulse, is to say there's something else there that pertains to zoning that's maybe lost or needs to be clarified there. Because it, we can grant zoning variances, too, if we're asked to, and that, so there may be some way that that language is allowing that insertion, is my guess, but.
Except for the zoning, they only have the zoning. They only have to get one of, and a.
All of a sudden, we've got a different certification for that, yeah.
And it's almost impossible not to, I mean, that's the other thing I was concerned about, is it just seems like, it's, like, I try and think of what a case would be that you wouldn't grant a zoning change, you know, I mean, because of the simplicity of getting it, the ease of meeting land. Like, if listening, you only had to meet three of these, think about how many we would be passing. That's been a concern.
So have we done any, I know we talked about it, we didn't want, we didn't want to cut ourselves in a situation where we were discussing things out of session.
Right.
Have we made any more progress on that issue or that, or that idea of doing training on these particular items, whether it's with Mr. Scavron or with somebody else?
I would, I would like that a lot.
Excitedness?
And I wasn't sure what to vote with Mr. Scavron about, but I think it's a good idea even for myself because it'll clarify on my end.
Yeah. And his general training is when you first come on and they have them once in a while and you go in, but they're not just for planning zoning, they're for all the commissions. And so it'd be really nice if he had a session that, that was aimed toward just this stuff.
Yeah. I also feel like, in a lot of ways, too, there's some, there's not, there could be some clarity, too, as far as what you're, you're doing, what services you're performing. It came up tonight, and I think it's, it's got to be extremely difficult and, you know, sometimes feel like a lose-lose situation where you're, you know, not, you're trying to do the best you can.
Right.
You know, most of those situations came up tonight, actually, where it was like, well, we provide them with the addresses that are on record and that's all we can do.
Right.
And I totally understand that perspective because you do, you find yourself in a position where if you do the wrong thing, even for the right person, you'll be, you're in the wrong. And so I wonder how that, yeah, I can read stuff like, oh, like, the police department, fire department has no issue with it, but that's not necessarily the same as an endorsement of a variance, you know? How do we navigate or clarify those things?
And I think that the one speaker misunderstood what your role is. Your role isn't to sit there and give a breakdown everywhere. You guys say, we feel like they met them, but then that's our final saying, you know that, so that's okay.
Yeah, and I made sure to let her know that. I stated it to her several times that I am not the decision maker.
Right.
I, I write my report, I write what I've been given, and I give my recommendation, but I don't make the decision.
Right.
The commission does.
So it doesn't matter?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Well, and to the point that Commissioner Costello was making about the emergency services, because this came up at the last meeting, you know, the access to the property by emergency vehicles, and it seems to be one of the main driving forces for the setbacks and for a lot, for the high.
And fire.
And fire, and, you know, and safety in other cases. And I'm wondering, you know, is there maybe a more standardized way to go? For example, a form that says, we hereby, you know, emergency services, check, you know, it's okay, it's okay, it's okay, and then we can look at that document and we know that there's a check list of no concerns or there is a concern. Because the way it's worded here, you know, after department, there was no comment.
Well, that's. And do they go out and look at the site or did they not even go and look at the site? That's the question.
They look at the file. And basically, that's just, I don't know how that was decided, but they do look at the file and then they ask me questions on it. And the majority of the time, they don't have a comment because they don't deal with, I mean, it's my job to, if it's, you know, within the setbacks or, you know, if that's being done, but if it's a variance and they're trying to build something in the setbacks that they're applying for, so whether they think it's safe or not, they don't, I don't, they always comment.
Right. And, and that seems germane, given that that's the purpose, it seems to me, of the original fence height, optimizing the setback rules, relates specifically to that. So if we don't have that sort of comment, then it, it puts it in an ambiguous area, to me. I don't know if I'm not seeing this correctly.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how much more, I mean, did you want more input from each department? Is that what you're saying or?
Well, what I'm asking is, is when we have these kinds of situations, when there's a request for a variance, it often relates to emergency services. So if there was something that said.
No reason not to approve.
Exactly. You know, something more explicit than no comment.
So they're saying no comment, they say no reason not to approve.
Right. I would, I'd have to find out if they're allowed to recommend or, or, you know, give an opinion. I mean, I don't, I don't know. I don't know.
Well, and so maybe that could be folded into what we've been talking about this meeting with Mr. Scavron, which would answer everything, I think, for me.
Right, yeah. And then we don't have anything next month.
No.
And I know, I don't think he, does he do evening meetings or does he not do evening meetings or what?
I think he's more available later afternoons, but.
And how is there availability scheduled on a Tuesday afternoon?
I could get in here for it or something. I don't know about the availability of everyone else.
Or if you guys wanted to schedule a special time, if you want to talk to Mr. Scavron and see when, what it's going for. I don't know, we could schedule it because we don't have to do it necessarily on the date and time, right?
No. I was just saying that we know we're all usually free that kind of time. It's really hard to coordinate.
Yeah.
Everybody, but, because it would be very nice to have it and have everybody be there. That's been one of my frustrations in the past, but some of the trainings is, you know, only certain people make it and some people never get them then.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I guess maybe, would it be possible for, or do you want me to directly contact him? Or do you want to contact him?
Because they're the chair, maybe.
Okay. I'll call him and.
I know before when I tried to contact him, he said for you to call him.
Okay. So, okay. Let's see, I will call him and see if he, by any wild lucky chance, would be free, you know, even five o'clock, even four o'clock, five o'clock on that same day, be everyone here, or for me. So that way, if he doesn't want to do the evening, I'll see if he happens to, and if we do that far in advance, he could do that and let everybody know.
Okay.
Okay. That's wonderful. Good discussion. Anything else?
I'm not sure who I got to go to because I'm on a couple of boards as well, but it has to do with the Sunny General for the state of Mexico coming to town, talk about sunset laws and some other public hearing type laws.
I think it's, when, if you have any, is actually.
Maybe you put all of that? I think it was artificial. Yeah, I gotta mean that about.
It's gonna be on.
April. Okay, it was.
Here it is. Can I see it? Yeah, I thought it was a training that pertained to the Open Readings Act and.
Yeah.
How to follow those.
Right.
I don't see it. Maybe it's on April 18th since I have some reading to do with it.
Well, I tried to address the P, here's the email address, and then I got a mail notification that the email address was not an accurate one. So if anyone else wants to go, use the wrong number.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
One second.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.